At six thirty we'll call a meeting to order and please start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that will take us to reports. Any city council reports, uh, tonight? No? Alright, any questions on the sheriff's department report? Maggie, is there a spot further down for the police contract discussion, or is that part of the report?
Um, that is...
There's a spot further down.
That's right after the monthly report, yeah. And I'll, yeah, I'll go to that.
Alright, then we'll move to the sheriff's contract.
No one from the sheriff's department here? I thought Cheeta was coming.
Maggie, did Commander Cheeta, was he in touch with you? Was he gonna come today?
He didn't... Did he usually come?
Mm-hmm.
Obviously does. Okay, it's, it looks like the contract, any questions on the contract? It looks like there was a decrease from last year. Increase it a little bit, Maggie, please.
Yep. Um... So, um... Yeah, I wasn't sure how to make it.
And now you can just do page two.
Yeah, I apologize.
October fifteenth is the deadline, from what I can read in the thing. First of all, they, they, on page four, they need to change the name of the administrator. And then I just had questions about the, um, ordinances and who, the CSO and what, how many hours we typically get from them and...
I would suggest we table it down to the first council meeting in October and have Commander Cheeta...
Yeah, I apologize about that.
I just thought he was coming. Such a conversation.
Any concerns with tabling it? Alright, we will table, uh... I'm sorry, uh, B two until the first meeting in October. And we'll connect with Commander Cheeta and have him tab, please. Alright, any, uh, comments, questions on the public works monthly report? Hearing none, we'll move to the administrator report. Any comments on the administrator report? And fire department reports. Any comments on the report for the fire department?
Can I have something to add, report?
Yep.
Did we receive a DNR grant? Some, uh, for our jumpsuits, three, like seven jumpsuits and it's a fifty-fifty grant.
Okay.
Somewhere around one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars or something. What they're...
Good, okay. You got a plan on replacing it still this year?
Yes. I need to do it this year because of, of like...
The way the grant works?
Yeah, it's a grant.
Okay, perfect, good, thank you. Alright, that'll take us to E two, uh, for our para potential increase resolution. Rod or, or...
President, I'm Dana Booty, president of the, uh, Mayor Fire Department Relief Association. The mayor relief association requests that the city council increase the benefit levels per year service. Currently we're at two thousand, we'd like to move to twenty-two hundred. Uh, if you look at the sheet, the next one in it, Para did a estimate for us, for if you were to contribute into our retirement fund. Right now we're, we're funded, so we can have the option of moving up if we would like to. Uh, the annual contribution for the city would be three thousand seven hundred and twenty-six if we moved to, or twenty-two hundred.
Don't we contribute now already? Why are they zeroed? Because of the investments?
Yeah, because of the way that we're funded.
So, right now, the way it looks, we could already bump it up to twenty-one hundred without still contrib- having to contribute?
Yes.
Well, for sure we should do that. Right? I mean, we still don't, we can bump it up a hundred dollars and we still don't have to contribute because of their investments. So far. Unless the economy shifts again, and then we have to contribute. Is that the way it works?
Yes.
So, I, uh, and I would agree, I would certainly agree with that. When was our last increase?
Five years ago.
Five years ago.
Has it been that long? I think it might have been longer.
Across the county, we're one of the lowest retirements per year of all the fire departments. We generally get that twenty-four hundred. You know, we haven't asked for any increase in five years, that's kind of our...
When did Para take over and we stopped having...
Five years ago.
It was five years ago.
Yeah.
And that's when the increase was, or I thought it was the year later by the, uh, increase? The two thousand dollars.
Correct.
What was it before that?
Eighteen ninety-nine?
Yeah, something like that.
Any other questions, comments on that?
And, um, mayor and council, there, if it were to get approved, there is a resolution that would have to be passed. Uh, once you do increase it, it cannot be decreased. Um, and it is an annual fee that would be paid, but it, depending on investments, it would, it could fluctuate. So, right now it is, or for next year in December, the payment would be three thousand seven hundred twenty-six, based on the estimate that was given by, um, by, um, Para.
And when do you have, is there a deadline when you have to change it?
Uh, if we choose to increase the benefit levels, that plan would be on January first.
But we can...
Two thousand eighteen.
But we could do it in December at any time.
Yeah.
Back to January eleventh.
Yeah.
Anytime before the first of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So, can we see, um, numbers of what area fire departments do, instead of just, like, New Germany or...
Yeah.
We know a lot about my group, so, um...
Yeah, mm-hmm. If I can get them on...
Who?
Thirty-five dollars. And ours comes right up off there too, and then all the whole point for increases this year also.
Someone I would prefer to have in front of me when these come.
Yeah, as much data as possible, so we can...
This was last minute, my initial thoughts were, because we're in the budgeting process, initially I thought, we need to settle up on the budget first and then go from there, you know, if it's in there now, decide what we're gonna do. Earlier today, my thought was this should come after our budgeting, but I don't know if I necessarily... Uh, uh, if, if I'm so concerned with that, um...
And it is, right now in the preliminary budget. I did include it.
It is in there?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
It would be a line item that could get cut, but I don't think that should be a line item that does get cut, so I'm, I'm... I'm okay moving forward today, uh, as far as I'm concerned, but, um, if, if we want to get more information and we're not in a hurry, with, uh, minimum time, I don't have a problem waiting either.
Okay, well, I can definitely look up more numbers.
And that'll give us a little time. I'm not sure where Councilman Boater is, and obviously he's not here, so his vote wouldn't matter. I'm not sure where the conflict of interest may come in, or upstanding.
I would, yeah.
Upstanding, yeah, I'm assuming Eric would also, if he was here, but, um, I, I don't, I, if, if you have questions or want some more data, I'm okay tabling it, but I'm alright making a decision today also. Seeing these numbers again, I wish I would have had some of this in front of me sooner, um, to get through it, but, um, I, I, I don't have a problem.
I'd rather table it. There's one to see.
Do you want to know the numbers of what...
Of other departments' retirements and...
On paper, or you want...
Yeah. I would like that, yeah. Just because...
And which department?
Carp County. Okay, well, I can put something...
Comparable sized cities would be great.
Okay, I can put something together for that one.
Thanks.
Table it, I'm willing to table it, but if on the agenda, someone is watching to make a motion, they certainly can tonight. Otherwise, we can table it until next council meeting.
I'd be happy to make a motion. I make a motion to, uh, increase the benefit level to twenty-two hundred dollars, um, at a yearly contribution of thirty-seven twenty-three fifty.
Do we have a second? Councilmember McNeely, you're abstaining from the conversation. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Either way, I want to see the data.
We could have to...
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Yeah, I'd just as soon move forward myself on this. I think in five years, I thought it was less than five, that concerns me that it's been that long. A small increase, two hundred dollars to two thousand, it's a small increase, I'm very comfortable moving forward.
So, you don't think after you see the data, it could be a bigger increase? Just wondering.
It could be the, they know the data and this is what they're proposing.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, going, looking to them for that. If they were proposing a lot more, I think I'd want to see some of the data, but I'm comfortable with that increase. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming in, yeah, thank you. Alright, that'll take us to, uh, E three, the thermal imaging cameras. Rod, if you'd like to start that out.
Um, our SCBA's, uh, MSA came out with a individual thermal imaging guns that go inside with our new SCBA's we've gotten two years ago. And they were selling for two thousand two hundred dollars a piece. And right now, I think your schedule says eight twenty-five, is it, or eight seventy-five in there? It's actually nine seventy-five. A piece, and we would like to purchase seven of them. It's kind of a, somewhat of a safety thing for, uh, so when the individual goes on scene. They're hand-free. So, all it is, is on their pack, they lift it up and they can see everything as far as getting out and, and also for search and rescue.
How many do you have now, did you say?
Thermal imaging guns, the, the larger ones, we have three.
And you want seven?
Seven of these individual ones that are, you know, those large ones, they ran fifteen thousand dollars. But these are only seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, and they're colored screen, you know, it's just the smaller screen, but it's... More people can have them on themselves when they're in a fire, you know, in case, who knows, if they have a collapse or something and there is a separation, you know, they have their own that they can look.
Now, I'm familiar with the ones that are on the helmets. So, what kind are, you said they're kind of on their gear, or is it...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the helmet ones, I mean, those are ancient. They don't do that anymore, they haven't done them for a number of years.
So, what is...
They're individual handheld ones.
Oh, you just take it out of wherever you have it and stick it on your back?
No, on your, no. On your pack, there is a gauge that shows how much air you have, um, how much is, you know, left, what you're using, there's all on that. Now, it'll be on that gauge also, it's gonna have this camera. And a screen that's probably two inches, like two X. And you apply glue like this, you know, it's right on your pack, and all you gotta do is flip that up. You press a button, it'll show any film leaves and, you know, it'll show black and white, colors, everything for, uh, heat emitters and stuff there in, in the building. And so, when you go in, you only have, you know, one guy had it, and now, if there's four guys going in, four of them will have it, uh, you know, have their hands.
All of them's good. I'm just looking at the fifteen thousand versus, I don't know, eight hundred there.
That's technology.
Have you guys been using them? Do you have any now, or one of the departments are using these?
Um, not a lot of departments have the upgraded air packs. There are a few of them, um, I think Victoria is probably the only one that I know that might have them.
So, they're using them, they're, no issues with them there?
We got a warranty, ten-year warranty, which gives, air pack technically is a fifteen-year warranty, gives life on that. We got three years of, so it's almost the life of what the air pack is for.
Budgeted, this is budgeted for in twenty seventeen? What is this, a lot of new, new equipment, or... And there's, uh, funds available?
Correct.
So, you only have seven new air packs? Upgraded air packs?
We have twenty-four air packs.
That are upgraded?
They're all, they're brand-new. Uh, three years, I mean, they're going.
That's why you said the three years, okay.
Yeah, and so this is go on just seven of those air packs.
Why only seven?
So, three years ago, the air packs were pretty expensive, and then the upgrade was very expensive. So, I think what they've got going on is they put them on sale to get them out there, so they'll sell more of them once departments use them. So, if it's pitch black in here, and I walk in here with it, I can see all of you sitting there, in this camera.
And if you get up, you can see where you sat.
And you have three already, but the bigger one is the older, okay. I'm confused why you only want seven. Is it because of the price, or, I mean, who's the lucky seven?
The first truck.
The first truck. Where the ones going in?
Oh, you don't have things that are specific to you, just your gear, not your packs? You just throw on any, your, okay.
It's the feet in the truck that you sit in, it's what you're doing.
Okay, alright.
And it was, I guess more or less, it was not to get really...
You can manipulate them. Use them, manipulate them, let them go on and...
Is there typically only seven people that go inside?
Usually, three or four at a time.
The reason seven is we have a person that stands outside in case for something to happen. Something were to happen, that team goes in and finds our firefighter, so they would have them too. So, that's our difficulty, so.
It makes me feel better when my husband comes up, going in there, and somebody has one right there to look for people or firefighters. I don't think it's in your budget.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have them all, but is it necessary?
Necessary.
I mean, they're rotating them out, you know, out so fast, it may eventually be worth it.
Yeah.
And a lot of it too is once we come home, we can take that pack off and hand it off, put a bottle on, and hand it off to the next team.
I'll look for motion to approve the purchase of seven thermal imaging cameras for the old ones that go exactly by dollars.
Would it be an increase then, if, because I have eight seventy-five?
The seven ninety-five.
Seven ninety-five, so it'd be a decrease, so up to...
A decrease.
Six thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rod. I'm not gonna take us to, uh, yeah, uh, gaga pit for the park and rest commission. Maggie, do you want to start?
Yep. Um, so mayor and council in front of you today is, um, a request from the park commission. Um, they, at their meeting, approved spending one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars on the purchase of a gaga pit for the park. Um, and in your packet, there's a breakdown of the hardware and the lumber. Um, they decided to go with brown-treated wood, uh, and the, uh, public works department will be assembling the gaga pit. Um, Kyle is here, if you have any specific questions on the pit. Um, I included a little information about the game, it's kind of a variant of dodgeball, played with one ball, and, um, also in the packet is kind of a picture of what a gaga pit looks like. Um, we will be doing a, I believe, an octagon, um, with, I don't, uh, with kind of a hard surface base. Um, yeah, so there, the park board is looking to the council today to approve spending that amount, um, for a gaga pit.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
So, kids play this? Because I ask my kids, and they've never heard of it. I've never heard of it, but apparently it's, it's used in schools everywhere, so... I'm just curious, I just... Did you Google it? I did. Yeah. Apparently it's all the rage right now, so... Where, where is it gonna go? I think they play it in the gym, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't think, I...
My daughter's played it, yeah.
I don't... Yeah, oh, I'm not saying, so then people would just bring their own ball.
Well, let's stay up all year, you can take it down with us.
We'll take it down with you.
We'll try to restore it.
So, what's the, what was the base of it? Is the picture that we had, like, what, what it's really gonna look like?
Ours will be a little fancier, a lot of colors, a lot of brackets, up on side.
On the outside? It'll look nicer.
Yeah.
On the outside, brackets?
It's on the corners, so it'll have brackets.
Oh.
And it'll be a big, big door.
Oh, so peo- oh, okay. So, what's the floor of that?
Right now, grass.
In the grass. But you can play it on any surface.
And it's portable.
Gonna get money? Yeah, and that was one of the reasons that, you know, we, we were just thinking about doing it on grass, because it is portable, we can move it around different sites and all the cool helps. So, you have to know, where is it going?
By the playground, well, how?
Are you guys gonna do it for the viewers, or...
In between the playground and the level.
And when it's done, can we, like, post something on Facebook and sign and stuff, just so people know about it? I mean, I'm trying, why does it have to stay from the level?
It's not permanent, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. Interesting. Maybe the park board wants to play. Teach me, teach me how, and I will. I want to see it, so let's, let's put together a date.
I think it would leave some opportunity for possibly, um, celebration, maybe have a tournament or something, let's bring in, bring in another one and have, and...
Yeah.
Some other options.
It's a good stage.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that will take us to the resignation of, uh, park commissioner. And posting.
Yep, um, mayor and council, um, on August, as of August eighth, um, the former commission chair, Nate McNeely resigned, um, as a commission member. Um, he was formerly the chair, and so, um, so we would need to re-post for that position. Um, and so... And so, um, at that meeting, they all, uh, at the September fifth meeting, um, because he was the chair, the park board then recommended that council appoint, um, Alyssa, Alyssa Johnson, um, as the new commission chair. So, we would need a motion to approve, or actually to, um, approve the resignation of Nate McNeely, and then also a motion to approve, um, Alyssa Johnson as the new commission chair.
We have a motion to, uh, the resignation of, uh, the, uh, uh, the chair.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I'll look for a motion to, to Alyssa Johnson as, uh, uh, chair of the park.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Aye.
Uh, and then we're also looking, uh, the park board is also looking to council to post for this position, um, I believe on the website and on Facebook, um, and other means.
I'm second to you. Is it, is it gonna help them like it usually does, the park board interviews them and... Including any monitors and that.
Any other discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
And that will take us to, uh, city engineer. Any, uh, questions or comments on the city engineers monthly report? And then we will move on to the, uh, Mendat twenty twenty project, uh, for Highway twenty-five. Dave, if you want to start out, uh, with the company.
Sure, um, so, it was the spring, uh, Mendat reached out to us, uh, and wanted to have a, a meeting, or really a conference call, just to discuss, uh, some improvements to Highway twenty-five that they're planning in twenty twenty. Um, the project that was done here now is, uh, ten years old, actually, which is hard for me to believe, because that was, uh, seems like yesterday. But, uh, so that road's, uh, ten years old now. Mendat is planning a mill and overlay project all the way from, um, the south end of town, through mare, all the way up through Watertown. As part of that project, uh, there's going to be ADA improvements that are needed along the corridor. And so, there's some changes that are gonna need to be made regardless of, uh, kind of what the city would like to see, but as they're planning for this project, basically, they'd want to approach the city and, and ask what other things that, uh, they should be considering, what other improvements, uh, are needed along the corridor that, uh, at least should be considered, uh, incorporated into the project. So, uh, the email that I had sent you was a list of questions that we got from Mendat, um, that we'd just like to discuss, and Mendat's looking for some direction on, um, that I can share with them. So, you know, it's really, again, what's important along the corridor, that either needs to be preserved or added. Um, right now, the urban section ends at Fifth Street, so there's a question of whether or not, if they're gonna come through town to a project, is it an appropriate time to go from Fifth Street up to the roundabout, continue the urban section with, uh, curb and gutter, um, whether or not we need more trail or sidewalk. Uh, you know, for a long time, we've talked about the need to connect up to Mare Lutheran High, um, really all the way up to Fieldstone Parkway with some certain trail connection. Uh, would this be an appropriate time to, to look at that? Um, some streetscaping, landscaping types of things, and when we came through, did the last project, that's when we upgraded the lights to what we have out there now. I think we have some benches, some, um, garbage cans along the corridor, things like that, you know, are the... You know, are those, uh, still, uh, a- appropriate? Are they holding up well, or are there things that need to be added or changed as part of that? Um, as part of this, again, with the ADA requirements, one of the, the biggest restrictions out there right now from an ADA standpoint is the width of the sidewalk. If anybody can remember, before we did the project, I think it was probably five, six-foot sidewalks that were out there, and we had wood light poles that were along the street, and they were actually in the pavement. So they're kind of, basically, in that parking lane that's right now, we had, um, light poles that were there. When we came by, did the project, put in the, the curb and gutter and sidewalk, relocated the light poles behind the curb and gutter. But because of the way those bases are put in there, if you notice in some spots where we have the narrower sidewalk, you don't have much room between the edge of the sidewalk and those light poles. And they don't, um, meet current ADA standards, so that's one of the things that Mindot's gonna look to clean up and get compliant when they come through. To do that, they're gonna need to look at either getting some right-of-way or doing some things with the width of the street to make up that room that they need to, to make that work. So that's one of the things that they're wanting to just have some thought and discussion on, is kind of how that fits in there. Uh, one of the ideas would be is, right now, there's two twelve-foot driving lanes, two ten-foot parking lanes on either side of the road. And that's actually a pretty wide footprint. If you, um, visit the downtown and you park along that, that parking lane, ten feet is a pretty generous space to park your car as to what's marked off. So one of the thoughts would be is you could either narrow up those parking lanes to gain a little space or go from the twelve-foot driving lanes down to eleven-foot driving lanes, uh, which in some cases provides a traffic calming benefit, too, when you start squeezing people and it tends to lower the speeds. Um, ask whether or not there's any need for a bike lane through town, um, or we have a couple, I think, probably on this stretch from First Street North, I think we have one marked crosswalk. Is that correct, or do we have two? I think just the one at Fourth Street? And, you know, is there a need or desire to put some bump outs in or something like that, again, to either highlight or, um, improve the safety at those, those crossing areas? So really, everything's on the table, um, from Mindot's standpoint, I think they're willing to consider anything. Obviously, there'd be some cost sharing depending on what the items are, as far as, um, whether or not they fit into the scope of the project that Mindot was planning to do, or there's something extra that the city wants to participate in and get done. But, um, they're starting to try to do that planning now, and, and they're looking to get some feedback from the city. The other thing they're interested in hearing from you is what kind of public involvement you'd like to have or engagement from the public to have some comments or thoughts, uh, into that process. They've done some different things, uh, in other communities that they'd offer up to the City of Mare to try to engage the public in the process also, so...
I definitely believe we should get the public involved in this. Because I have two questions that I have regarding the project. Actually, they're all, are important, but I got two that just popped first in my mind. Um, the first one being a pedestrian crossing down on Twenty Fifth, uh, Schumcorr and Hidden Trail, pedestrian crossing, um...
And that would be south of the project, sorry.
Okay.
So First Street North is the limits of the project right now. But not, not to say that if there's some needs there that we, some engagement, uh, in the...
And my second question, I guess, is null and void, too, because, um, the gentleman who's in charge of the Veterans Memorial was just gonna be down there. He wanted to see if, um, when we do the Highway Twenty Five project, if we can do a little bump out for, for... But if it went First Street North, First Street North, that is not, I mean, what?
I thought that was in their plan.
That they just wanted to make sure that...
Oh, it could be done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They wanted to look at sidewalk also, or look at sidewalk, you know, um, along Twenty Five also, but...
But that's gonna be south of the project, so...
And, and again, you know, I don't, if the city has some significant concerns or real needs, south of First Street, and we want to bring those to Mindot's attention, and, you know, this still may be the appropriate time to incorporate those needs. And again, it, it might come down to what the appropriate cost sharing is to get those things done, but, um, it would seem that this would be a good opportunity to get things done at the same time, even if it's, um, the, the city has, has more of a... Yeah, and that's fine.
When are they looking for your...
Uh, as soon as you can give it to them. You know, they, we, we talked to them, um, I talked to them in the spring, that was when Rick was on board still. And so, uh, we've been kind of, um, we just haven't had a good opportunity to get this to you and have this discussion yet. So they, they reached out to me again and just kinda asking where we're at with it, so...
Just so I understand, if we, if the city decided to do nothing, they're gonna still do the sidewalks and the street? And they won't pay for it all?
I would say that they, they have a standard cost-sharing agreement that you would probably still...
No matter what, we're gonna be in for something.
For something. I would, I would be surprised that there would...
They've mandated, we are gonna have to pick up.
Yeah. I, I'd be surprised if you were able to get all, at no cost.
And so why wasn't any of this addressed ten years ago, when Twenty Five was done back then?
It was, it was, it was current at the time.
The ADA standards have changed in the last ten years?
The enforcement of the ADA standards have changed in the last ten years.
Yeah, I'd like to get public thoughts.
I'm sorry, Nikki, what was that?
I would like to involve the public. I like the idea of connecting the trails for some, all the way to the roundabout, you mean?
I would agree, I would agree, and I think the public, um...
What I want, the, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm not the one...
Have they even finished paying for the first one? Or do it?
No, I think those took twenty, twenty years.
No, we're gonna put another, something in the past.
On the Twenty Five one? Yeah, mine's ending this year.
You know how much, how long that assessment was, Dave, when they did? Was it twenty years?
Do it was done?
Did they do Twenty Five at the same with Ridge Road? No, that was a year after.
Right.
Mine was ten years, but I, the highway one might have been more expensive.
Yeah, it's been a lot longer, but I agree with City, um, some open houses and get the public involved in, in some of it.
It was a ten-year...
And some of that will dictate on what we decide to do. If we, if we find out we're doing very minimal and the road's getting overlaid, I don't know if there'd be a need.
Right.
Right, and, and that's not to say that there's anything significant for the city, but...
You know, the communication and learn a little from this Highway Thirty, or, or kind of a Thirty that's been a disaster and the communication process of it, but, um...
I'm sure we'll look into the bump out. And probably adding something to the salt on that crosswalk.
All I know is that bump out's gonna be a pain when you have to plow.
Plowing it, yeah.
So...
There from...
They, they do get hit. Well, Colonia, I think, has a lot of bump outs now. A lot of theirs, and we'll certainly follow, see what their feedback is on it.
Oh, I didn't, couldn't, I thought it would be a bump, but...
No, no.
How does it pump, how it came to the route?
Right. Uh, they're, they're...
Your cars are gonna hit that or whatever.
They're not very pronounced, but we have something like that up in Fieldstone, at the crossings, where it, it guts out a little bit from the curb.
Does it seem appropriate a work session to discuss, maybe in the next, our next work sess- work session next month? That seem appropriate, and we can think about things a little bit, um...
Is there any grants or anything that...
I'd like to start getting some idea what they feel, some of this, sure, be, you know, if we did nothing, what, um, their, um...
Because we have lots of ideas, but it's all cost ideas.
Right, right. And we'll have to make those determinations on where, where does that go back to, you know, what's that assessment going to? I don't know if it necessarily should go to the people who live over, they're not approved of. For them, for the mandate to do it, and they already have an assessment.
And that's very frustrating, I mean, you would expect a state highway to be compliant for more than ten years.
I would agree.
And for them to come back in ten years, or, you know, twelve, thirteen years, and say, oh, we gotta redo it.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, not much of anything has been compliant up to the last couple of years.
And we'll have to do some investigating and that, but it was a joint project, and the city was involved, and the city side, I mean, we still have some accountability on, and it was done that way, and I think, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah, really, it's, it's the width of the sidewalk, and, and addressing that.
I, I remember, there's a lot of discussion on those sidewalks, about the width of them, what they'd be at the time.
There was.
Before I moved these, we're gonna have to look back at those, you know...
There was a lot of discussion on that.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, everything was done within the right-of-way that existed, no right-of-way was taken. And, um, and then if you go from, kind of, the business part of the downtown to the residential more to the north, the sidewalks go from eight feet to sixty.
All right, let's, uh, put it on the work session, then for October, and we have some discussion around that, and what we, where we think we wanna go with it. You think that'll work okay, Dave, getting back to...
Yeah, I'll get back to them with just some of the, the general feedback here. Uh, try to get some information, uh, on the cost, at least on, on what Mindot is thinking of doing, whether or not, what the, the city costs associated with that would be. And then, yeah, if, if you could, uh, give it some thought, and just so that we can start giving some feedback, that'd be good.
Get some pictures of what the bump out looks like, uh, what the bump outs are on the crosswalks, and...
How wide are the sidewalks now?
Uh, they vary, uh, the, the north and I...
What is the smallest?
I wanna say that they might get down to fi- five feet at places.
So we are compliant, then?
No, because you need, you...
Compliance is thirty-six inches.
You need, uh... You need behind the light fo- poles, you need the five feet.
And they're like right in the middle.
Yeah, they're right in the middle.
Yep. Yep.
And pushing a stroller, yeah, they're, it's like...
What, what's driving this? The ADA compliance, or...
No, I think it's, it's, what's driving it is the, uh, probably the mill and overlay schedule, and then when they do it, I believe that they're required to update the ADA.
I don't even think it needs to be mill and overlay, there's a lot of places on Highway Twenty Five that need to be fixed. And our town probably isn't one of them right now, but that ain't gonna make a difference either, to them. There's sixty, or twenty-five, or...
Yeah, all the way through Watertown.
Yeah, all the way, yep. All right, we'll move to that, any other discussion on that for now? We'll, I don't know, move to a work session. Uh, thanks, Dave. All right, let's move to seven A, uh, preliminary twenty eighteen proposed budget.
Okay. Mayor and Council in front of you is, um, some information. Uh, we had, uh, about the preliminary budget for two thousand eighteen. Um, we did have a work session last Wednesday where we did get some, uh, staff did get some feedback on, um, some changes in the expenditures side and revenue. Um, those changes were made, um, based on the discussion in front of you today is kind of some preliminary numbers. Um, so I have in front of you, there, there are, um, the comparisons between revenue from last year and revenue, I mean, for this year, and then the proposed budget for two thousand eighteen. Um, and then I also have the same for expenditures. Um, so this first resolution I'm gonna explain to you, um, is actually our total, uh, it shows the general fund breakdown, um, and then the debt. So this is our tr- total operating expenditures for, um, two thousand eighteen. It is up, um, from two thousand seventeen, uh, two thousand seventeen was one million four hundred and five, um, thousand nine hundred and thirty-six, and the reason for that is some, um, unaccounted, there's about fifty-three thousand that, um, when I worked with the city auditor, that was unaccounted for, um, that we, we need to make sure that we levy for this year. Um, and then other expenditures include, um, the addition of, uh, new Public Works employee, um, and then also the possibility of a, an administrative clerk, um, and the benefits that are associated with that. Uh, there's also some expenditures for the man- state mandated comprehensive plan, um, and then some other mi- uh, one-year projects, such as the dredging of a pond and the replacement of some equipment. Um, so there is about a, um, a two hundred and five thousand dollar difference from last year for the operating budget. Um, so that would, that's kind of the first resolution. Uh, and this is, this is, um, kind of before you take into account, you subtract the revenues that will also be brought in to offset the expenditures. Um, if you look at the second rev- resolution, um, this includes, um, if you look at the general fund levy, that includes revenues that, um, that off, or that takes into account the expenditures minus, I mean, the total expenditures minus the revenues. Um, and so the, the general fund levy would be five hundred and five thousand two hundred and eighty-four. Um, and that is, that's, uh, I think, a little up, it's about five thousand dollars up from last year, um, for general property tax. Um, so the, um, and then if you add in debt service, our total levy would be one million dollars sixteen thousand two hundred, twenty-five forty-six. Um, so that would be the levy that we would have to account for, um, so that's the, the total expenditures minus the re- the other revenue that we, um, have, and that's like, uh, local government aid that we received from the, from the state, other state grants, liquor licensing, building permits, zoning permits, and the, and all those, uh, other items. Um, so that would be, that's the total levy. And then if you, I included another, um, document that's available, um, outside of the packet. Um, our city did see a growth of about eleven percent in, um, market change from last year. And so, um, this is kind of the result of increasing, uh, residential homes and improvements that have been made in the community from last year. Um, so there, the total, uh, the total change on, uh, let me find the page. Um, so we're actually, the general fund would change about two point two percent, and then the subtotal with that, that debt that we were missing, um, it's, it's like a six point seven five percent. But since we did have, um, that market growth from, like, of eleven percent, um, if you look at the ta- like, the new tax capacity, which went up, um, the last year's tax capacity was about, uh, one million four hundred thousand, and this year it's about one million five hundred thousand. So if you, um, to calculate the tax rate, sorry, I'm not explaining this, here is, um, it, it actually goes, uh, last year was at a rate of fifty-three percent, and now this year it's at fifty-two percent. So the tax rate actually goes down one percent. And so on that one sheet, I did kind of a comparison of what it would look like, somebody with, there's four different kinds of housing values, kind of what they should see on their taxes. They should see kind of like a, a little bit of a decrease this year from last year. Um, and that's kind of because, um, we did increase our market value. So we are increasing our spending a little bit, or about two hundred thousand, but, um, to cover some of that debt, and then the increase of some staffing and some projects. But, um, we're also, there's also an increase in our, um, our market value and tax capacity because of our growth, and so we're actually seeing a decrease in our tax rate.
Market value increase along with our additional LGA.
Yes, our LGA did go up, um... Yep, it did go up about fifteen thousand, and then we, s- since we did see growth, we're also seeing a... And then since we did see growth, we're also seeing a growth in our building permit revenues as well. And so that's kind of offsetting some of the amount we have to levy.
And these are preliminary numbers.
And these are preliminary numbers.
Cut down, we can still get in there a little deeper dive. So preliminary, once we cannot raise any higher, we can just reduce.
Right, right.
And if we, moving up to, can we then at a later date move money from one line item to the other? Let's say we want to invest in, the crosswalks seem to be such a big issue right now.
Mm-hmm.
We need to put some money into that, but we don't have that in the budget right now. Can we move from one line item to the other?
Um, I believe so. I think it's just, like, if you look at the first resolution, it's just, like, we have a broken down between general government, public safety and stuff. I think, I think these numbers can't be increased in, from our final budget. But I, I believe, like, it's our total expenditures that cannot be increased. It has to stay within the number that we have, we finalized tonight.
Do you think it's coming along as a?
I believe so.
Yes, there's certain available individuals. From some of us. So I think we are getting to that point now that we're getting out of this recession. Housing's picking up again. We've sat for a lot of years of bare bones, obviously from a staffing perspective, from amenities within the city. I think it is time, I think it warrants this increase to start getting back up to where we need to be. We've got behind, the Paris is a good example of that for five years. We're slowly getting caught up on water.
What amenities does this budget reflect?
Well, there's sort of part board budgets in there. Anything for the part board, there's a slight increase in that. I mean, those sorts of things. Staffing is a big piece that we've really held back on staffing.
Like the new printer copier, we're kind of getting old on that. When I think of amenities, I mean, things that the community can use or that's not with the community.
Like a garden.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yep. So I think it warrants having somewhat of that increase. But we can get in there and sharpen up our pencil or button and reduce. I think we're, I think there's room for that. I think we, I think we're at a agreement on that at the work session on Wednesday. I think they still will, you know, the fire, the police contract is still at a hundred thousand. Offer a buck fifty grand and they're like, you know, so I think they're going to still make it look a lot better than it is, even with this decrease made out.
And I want to see, like, I'm gonna bring mine in, an actual proposed from what we do here. Because we should have that before it's summer.
Yeah.
We can see actual.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this is a good gauge, but, you know. It depends on your home value too. I mean, if your home value goes up more, then.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they can-
Your budget, I'm like, I don't see it in the D.
No, not my own, I don't have my own budget for this.
Right, right.
But no, like, my own tax proposal to see, usually my value went up ten percent.
That kind of gives you a base when you look at it.
It gives you, yeah.
They're not all the same, some go up, some go down based on, based on your home value.
Yeah, what's in front of you is kind of like if your house value stayed the same.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not like a great, I mean, it's not the greatest tool, but it does give somebody an idea. But, yeah, if your house did change value, it's possible that your taxes may go up or down. It, yeah.
See how comfortable with these numbers, the way they are, knowing we can.
I would like to see the work session though, just larger.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I think we have, I would expect more than one. Get this solidified and get ahead of the curve. I'd like it wrapped up by the end of November, by the last thing in November, so we're a little ahead of the curve. All right, so maybe I assume it's appropriate to approve the budget one first and then the tax levy, or does it not matter?
Yeah, so you can, it, yeah, it doesn't matter. That, the proposed budget's first. The numbers are a little off based on how I created the resolution, but.
I want a motion to approve resolution nine dash twenty-five dash seventeen dash thirty-four to the mayor's proposed budget for twenty eighteen. Do we have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion?
Like, Nikki, I just want to see some, a little bit more fine details and then not have that amount go over what I stated here. Definitely trying to get under that amount.
Yeah. And we have, yeah, we have, yeah, we have to now. We cannot go above this once we send this to the county. It can only go down. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I want a motion to approve resolution nine dash twenty-five dash seventeen dash thirty-three adopting twenty eighteen preliminary tax, preliminary tax levy for the city mayor.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
So the levy is five oh five two eighty-four, is that right?
Yep, so that's the levy that, for the general fund. So you have the, let's see, I can't find the sheet. This is the number after you, you count, factor in all the other revenues, like the local government aid and stuff.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then we have our upcoming meetings. Any acknowledgements?
Um, what did I read about a hockey rink? Well, that was in the minutes. So, yeah, what do you, they're not gonna be able to play hockey on that.
Not if you do a court play.
No. So we will have to make sure that they don't bring, I can just see hockey courts falling into people's windshield. People parking at Snap, people parking at Health, all over.
Skating rinks.
Things going on at Zion. So, yeah, we're gonna have to propose that you can't play hockey.
All right, anything else? I want a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Okay, we'll call the work session to order. We'll start out with Deer Woods Court. We have Melissa and Karen in the audience tonight. Maggie, did you have, Janelle, got you fully up to speed on this? Do you want to start out or do you want me to?
Um, probably better if, if maybe you did.
Okay.
I know a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Deer Woods Court, we, they have a, they have a water bill. I don't know where to start. They have a second meter. No, we have not talked about one. They have a second meter.
Because I'm like, I've not remembered.
They have an irrigation meter on Deer Woods Court. It got installed back in twenty-eleven. It got installed properly. It got signed off as being installed through our process. It did not then get, and for the lack of a better term, we didn't flip the switch internally to start, that it would start reading. So Kyle went around and did his readings for the last six years. It never picked up that meter. It had just never happened.
Did it pick it up or did it? From what I understand, it picked it up, but there's no rate assigned.
But they didn't know, yeah, they didn't know. So, yeah, maybe it was reading, but they didn't-
It was reading, but there was, it was charged.
They didn't know, yep. So it wasn't working properly. The water was being used, there was water being used. So the problem got found May or June, early this spring, the problem was found. Then it got turned, the switch was flipped. So now it took a big reading, a four hundred and thirteen thousand gallon reading and assessed it, our, as our rate, as it was this year.
So it kept what it was?
So it was there. The meter was moving, so we knew what the starting was when it was installed in twenty-eleven. We now know what the reading was in June of this year, May of this year. It was four hundred and thirteen thousand gallons were used. So that obviously took it into the high tiered water price and calculated out to a four thousand three hundred dollar bill. Is that about right, is that the right number? Do you have the numbers, Maggie? We should have those, but.
Sorry, Janelle, I've been gone.
Four thousand three hundred, does that sound right? Um, dollar bill. Obviously, the residents have some concern on that and now we have to figure out, there's not dispute, the water was used, but.
So the, I-
Go ahead. And Karen and Melissa, if you want to come up with a podium.
How long have you lived there?
Yeah, so they, if you can just state your name and address, just for the record.
Karen Huntsiger, twenty-four eighty-two Deer Woods Court.
Did you not, did you not recognize that you were not getting billed for this?
No, so our water bill was, I mean, higher than we wanted it to be and one of our neighbors suggested we get a second meter. So we had come to the city, purchased the water meter here, had no idea for a plumber. So they gave us a name, we used the plumber, the water bill went down. And we didn't question it, we kind of got the result we were looking for. And then in June, we didn't get our water bill, so we came in and they told us this outstanding bill is about forty-three hundred dollars. So clearly not what we were expecting to hear.
Janelle purposely didn't try to tell she could try to figure out the rate.
Right, yeah, well, I don't know, somebody might have passed out if I'd come home, but.
Right, right. So that was intentional on our part.
Yeah. Was the water just not recognized by the other meter at all?
It was recognized, but there was no rate assigned to it.
So the, their first, their first meter does not include the second meters. So it was just like-
They're separate.
Do the bills come separately or is it on?
No, there's a line item, there's a line item on the bill that says irrigation.
Oh.
And then, you know, and they didn't have that line item on there because it was never showing up, so.
And how would anybody know that it was supposed to be there?
So, and I did meet with the residents some six weeks ago and discuss a little of this, try to figure out some solutions that we could, you know, what could be done. The water was used. Yeah, it's, um.
What kind of resolution are you looking for?
I don't think we ever came into this thinking that we weren't gonna pay anything. I think the thing that's really hard for us is, I mean, we live on a budget. And we've budgeted to our heating, to our water, to, you know, every part and piece that we're doing. So, you know, had we realized that we weren't paying for it, we probably would have, or that if, if we knew it was gonna be more expensive and we knew what that budget was, we probably would have reduced pretty significantly. Because we didn't even know we were spending that kind of money. So now we're looking at this forty-three hundred dollars, it's not a drop in the bucket to us. So even if it's broken out over the six years with no interest, it's still money we have to add into our budget that we really weren't given that option.
According to RIC and state statute, these sorts of, per the law, the resident is responsible for it, no matter where the air came. That has RIC has thrown out. Now, it keeps resonating with me as I met with them. It's like, they wouldn't have watered that much had they known their bill was that high. I know, I have an irrigation system.
Oh, plus you're not using it half the year anymore.
So I have a good idea of what, what it is. And, and I know, because I was in that same boat when I first started and I saw what my water bill was and I was like, oh, wow, I gotta come wait, you know, once I, they didn't know, so why would they have not cut back? So that keeps resonating with me without seeing that bill every month. They didn't have the opportunity to not use it. So.
Do we know what the average is that people use in a year?
Yeah, so I did, I did put together for my own, for my, and can you make a figure, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, you want a?
From my, and I started working through this. I was trying to figure out different solutions for this.
Yeah.
So what I did.
Because I don't like the high bracket. I mean, I think for sure we need to bring the-
I took, I water through June and August is typically the irrigation. And I factored in, well, if you water at least once a week, you water once a week, um, and I'll have to show. And each irrigation cycle is about three thousand gallons every time you water. So I was just trying to figure out where I would land on something like this. So I figured twenty-eleven, it was one month because it was towards the end of the year when they got this installed, it was August when it was installed, so it was one month.
So this is yours?
Yeah, I made this.
Yours, right?
So that was four times they would have watered in that one month. That's three thousand gallons, the time came at twelve thousand dollars. Here's what our rate was at that time for twelve thousand three fifty, or about forty-two bucks for that month. I did the same thing for twenty-twelve, three months worth of time, July, August, it's thirteen weeks. That would be thirteen watering cycles, that's three thousand, thirty-nine thousand gallons. So that's how I kind of figure out a fair way to do it.
So about twenty thousand gallons difference than what they were using a month, twenty thousand gallons. They were using about fifty-nine thousand gallons a month, just on their irrigation.
If you divide it out, yep.
Throughout the six.
The four hundred thirteen thousand correct. But never had that opportunity. Now, I do feel there's some homeowner's responsibility that your winter bill is the exact same as your summer bill and say, hey, why did that, you know, I think there is some of that responsibility there. To see that difference, but I was trying to think of a fair way, what I thought would work using, you know, again, although they used it, their responsibility, never had that opportunity to use it.
I agree, using the rates that were at the year.
Yep.
Because we-
And those are accurate, those are neat.
Didn't do an increase, you know, they didn't use the water all this year.
And again, that's just a spreadsheet I threw together to get my head wrapped around where I, that, that, I, I'm comfortable with that.
So starting in June, then we, then the meter picked it up correctly and got billed correctly starting in June? Okay, starting in June?
Yep.
So the billing, the billing got corrected then? So now they're gonna bill it appropriately, minus this whole six years of this mess up?
Janelle's kind of waiting to figure all this out because you can't send them the bill or deliver any numbers plugged in to bill. So you haven't had any bills? You have a kind of?
I think, yeah, she probably did-
You have not?
No, I have.
Oh, you're, okay. Okay, okay, so you're sixty bucks or whatever it is.
Yeah, so it's still the water bill.
Seventy bucks, okay, okay. And so you haven't used irrigation at all since the issue? Yeah. Yep. Some sweet time, yeah. Okay. So we gotta figure out what are we gonna, yeah, we gotta get this resolved.
Okay, so these-
Because they installed it in August. Yeah, yeah.
So.
They installed it in August. Seventeen is only one month because in June we found it.
Right.
That's why.
And those are our lowest tier rates?
Those are the rates for thirteen thousand gallons.
Okay, okay.
Which was used, so it's, I think it's the second tiered one.
Okay. But of, but that, of that year, because we did have increases.
And that's why they're, yep, and that's why they're changing. So it's the water rate for thirteen thousand gallon usages, three fifty in twenty-eleven, three eighty. And I just thought one time a week, even if you cut back, you know, some weeks would it be two, but some weeks when it rains you want, I just use that as a point of reference again.
I know I, because we have the irrigation system too. We don't have a separate meter, so I can always tell when it's winter and summer. And I know how much it costs me to, to water my lawn each time. One or twice, once to twice a week depending on the year, you know.
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with that amount, partly because I think it was error on both sides.
I, I think it was too. I mean, there was an error on our side.
And but the fact that, you know, your water bill went down instead of, you know, like Mike said, you know, in the wintertime, your bill's gonna still the same, so.
Yeah, I think we've gotten used to budgeting it that way. And we do the same thing with our heat where it's literally the same thing because we're on a budget plan.
Right.
It's not something we've ever had to look at our water bill, other than we saw that you decreased what we're looking for, okay, that's what we're gonna do, we feel good about this number. It's not something we've ever had a look at our water bill, other than we saw that it decreased, we're looking for, okay, that's what we're gonna do, we feel good about this number. And then if it were to go way up or go way down, we'd probably want to know why, but there wasn't a ton of movement, so-
Yeah, I just, I think there's, I think there are issues on both sides, so I would be comfortable with that.
I mean, it's- it's long gone. I mean, it's not, the city's out anything because of this. That, it's all written, I mean, it's- it's a new, it's, it's-
Right. So, I think the forty-three hundred is a little over because now we're looking at, you know, the higher rates and everything else, and we know that wasn't used at one time.
Right. Yeah. I've- I've played around different ways to do it, just trying to take an average price, but I- I-
I think it's an average, yeah.
I think this is fair at nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and five cents, but I don't know, I mean, you may agree or disagree. Certainly let us know your thoughts on that, but-
So, but the gallons were four thirteen?
The gallons were four hundred and thirteen thousand, yep. So, doing it this way, I mean, it cuts it down to two hundred and twenty-two thousand gallons used.
Right, to say what?
Again, because they couldn't, they didn't have the opportunity to even cut it back.
They didn't have a way to- to cut it back.
So, they just watered, watered, well, why wouldn't they? Yeah, watered away. Any other, any other feedback? Do you have their view?
I don't know. I feel like we've had some good conversation with you and I think, you know, it's- it's hard to fault. I mean, it's not a small bill. I mean, obviously, we used the water. I think the hardest thing for us is we had no knowledge. And it's not something, and you and I have discussed this, it's not something that's been assessed throughout the city. So, they could come back to you in two years and say, oops, we made a mistake, you owe us two thousand dollars. So, I think my hope would be that this would highlight that there's potentially an issue and that there would be some systematic way for them to audit. I mean, our neighbors are two down from us, have a beautiful one as well. And, um, we went to them, they were paying about the same amount. And they got nervous. They thought they were part of it, it just hadn't, they hadn't been caught, you know, like it hadn't been caught in the same way. And so, they came to the city and said, hey, we want it read. Someone came out and read their meter and their meter wasn't working and they owe nothing because there's literally, and it's, it would be about the same amount of time. They've been paying the same amount. And the only difference is, is that since their meter wasn't working, there's no record of how many-
Yep.
gallons were used. So, I understand it's not apples to apples, but I think the hard thing for me is, in their case, they didn't know. In our case, we didn't know. They obviously were watering, were watering. Um, but because theirs can't be read, they don't, they don't owe anything and we still owe money. And I'll tell you, like, we absolutely take culpability for using the water and we weren't expecting to not pay anything. But I do think that the recommended amount is far better than, you know, the original amount. So, I think that's just kind of where we're at.
So, is there a process that-
And we have, this is Kyle, he's our public works, who does the reading.
Oh, did you change the meeting?
I did, you did.
And here's the thing, they came forward for the right reasons and-
It is. We did have conversations that wrapped around that and I think the city can look at it. There's, we think there's some potential gaps in there and water meters do break and things happen. I- I don't know if there's a, I mean, that can happen with the inside one or the irrigation one. Inside one will get caught.
So, yeah, that's my next question is, how- how are we going to prevent this from happening in the future? What's our, what's our new procedure? Or how are we, how are we gonna be auditing this now?
That's the, well, Janelle, every month she gets the list of every meter and she'll look through it and see, okay, is this, you know, still mark things that are audit orders. She comes to the house and, okay, the inside meter hasn't read, it hasn't gone up a thousand gallons in the last two months, three months, she's probably looking at that meter. In that case, their bill, they were ha- yeah, they weren't getting charged, the meter said zero, and they knew they were irrigating, so they got ordered. So, they saw that on their bill and then they called. Well, I go in there and in the old meters, there's a rotating part, the housing building and everything and a rocker, it was a little, almost got stuck in the impeller and stopped the spinner inside the meter. Our new meters are all digital, all solid-state.
So, that can't happen?
No moving parts, yes. So, that's our manufacturer's way of kind of getting around this issue.
But you still have all these old meters that are out there, though.
We've been replacing them.
On the indoor meter, we would catch fairly ea- fairly easily, right?
Right.
The irrigation one, so every house has two, two meters now. So, now it's just a matter-
A new one, yeah.
So, some of- And I don't know that number, but they should have that irrigation line on. They'll know when they're not, like, this guy, their neighbor, would know. I mean, he knew it, they're gonna have to take accountability for that. Because this is such a-
They came forward because we brought it to their attention.
Right, but they would have noticed it. They would have noticed that. They have an irrigation line where you didn't have the irrigation line on your bill, so you wouldn't bill.
So, you have no irrigation line on your bill?
So, they had one and they've been paying, paying enough, so they realized, oh, it's zero. They come forward or not, if they would have thought, oh, we're just gonna not say anything, let's see what hap- you know. That's on them.
Right.
But you didn't have that irrigation line and I think that's, I- I think there's you and far between of those, which would have happened.
Yeah. And it's not to call anybody out, it's not to call the city out in any way, shape or form, but just like, I don't feel real comfortable with any of this.
Right, right. We can certainly-
I don't think anyone else would if they had the same thing happen to them. And I know it wasn't just our house, it sounds like there were more houses that were brought to a couple, I think it was three total is what I know. So, I get that ours was probably a little, a bit of a different circumstance.
Very unique. Yours is a certainly unique situation.
But I just wouldn't want anyone else to fall into that unique, so I, you know, part of me coming here and wanting to speak about is to hopefully bring it, so that there's a solution go forward.
And I think we should consider looking at them and they, we should look at that because when one does break, if that person does the same thing, they're getting all that free water. You know, we hope people would be honest, but I don't know how we would capture that with the irrigation part because we don't know if we'd catch fluctuations, someone might just now water. I- I barely water this whole year.
Most of the time, those meters stop, they need to quit like crazy.
Oh, do they?
So, yeah, they'll miss it quickly, 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 because the scribe's in and it won't. So, that's, I had maybe a handful of them that had calls because of that, but-
We can certainly look at some solutions, some mitigation line.
Maybe we re- we just find a replacement straight away with it.
So, with the council, what do we feel? Um, are we okay with this as a group of thoughts? Do we want to look at it a different way? Either way, it'll have to come back to council for approval to- to whatever it is. And in that meantime, if this is a number, I'd like you to work and get a payment plan. If it's a one year, anything up to six years, which is allowed by statute, however they want to pay it. But we're gonna have to, I don't know, are we comfortable with this number?
I am.
We want to have some-
So, there's no base fee involved in irrigation either?
Nope.
The base fee usually is off the monthly.
You raise the water, yeah. So, irrigation is only what you use and that's a good average, I would say, of what people, for the most part, use, who pays into the irrigation?
That's my average.
And that's, and that's the thirteen thousand gallon rate and not, you know, the highest tier rate-
Right.
Of four hundred and thirteen thousand gallons, so. And we know they didn't use four hundred and thirteen thousand gallons in one month, so I don't think it's very charged to the upper rate. I think that's a fair amount.
I'm comfortable with that.
And paying it off and payment plans, not getting some security on it.
And why don't you bring it to council, but that's what council will, um, have the final payment, the re- whatever that reduction will be that's bound to that amount. And then if you could work with them in the meantime to find out, so we can add that as part of the, as part of the agenda item on how long they would like to do that payment plan, uh, not for six years. Anything more? I-
Can that be a question?
It can, if- if they wanted to.
Yeah, and that's something, that's an option too, and work with them on that option. That could just leave it to the end of the year and not pay it. And then it could get assessed onto your taxes, if you'd rather do that.
And you just pay them off?
And then just have it part of your house payment, you know, it's a bad thing.
So, it would be part of your escrow?
Essentially, it would go, it would go onto your taxes.
Then I'd get caught, then I'd get caught up in a year. Okay. Whatever you guys decide you want to do, just so you're aware of all the options. Right, right. Any other comments?
Is that fair, do you feel? I mean, I know forty-three hundred dollars is- is huge, so. Yeah. And would, do you agree that this is kind of based on your normal usage, probably how much you use?
All right. All right, we'll bring it to council next time and then we'll resolve it and then however you want to work on the bill and we can get those.
Was it the next council meeting? Should we be at that council meeting if there's a question?
Right. And you have all the information you need, this is the number that's gonna come to us. And however the payment plan lines, you're, if you're comfortable with that, yeah.
So, what happens if for some reason, there's a change in that process and you want to adjust what?
Um, yeah, that-
Yeah, what happened at the meeting, so it's not like-
We'll send you the agenda. I mean, I- I think we're in align, I think we're in alignment. We have one council member who's not here, but, uh, I- I think she'll get on board with it and, um-
I, yeah.
That's why we have these, to kind of have-
I know for me, I'm- I'm committed-
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that number.
I'm committed to that number, so, um, it won't change for me, so. But if you want to stop in, uh, we can try to have it up towards the top of the agenda to get you in and out, you know, waiting, you know, an hour and a half. But that'll be up to you to decide if you want. I'll have Maggie send you the agenda, if you can decide.
Okay.
And certainly reach out if you, if anything comes up in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming in. All right, council chambers, number four. I- I added that, I wanted to add that on there and start having some discussion, obviously, as we're getting into budget. We do have some money in the twenty seventeen for some of the rooms. I think as we look at this building and now with the revenue coming in at thirty thousand, I think we need to make some upgrades to council chambers itself. And I want to give people's thoughts on what, you know, what I, personally, I'd like to, if it was me, I'd like to replace carpet. I would like to replace these desks with built, um, more council chamber desks. Replace the chairs that are pretty old and dirty, possibly a logo back here where the camera can see our city logo back on the wall. I'd like to make it more. As I'm watching other cities and being at other meetings myself, um, I think-
I think we need to look at upgrading our, uh, recording and microphone sound system I heard is more of.
Microphone, yeah, microphones, I think.
Yeah, yeah, because they can't hear us.
If we could get good desks in here, we get our computers up here and plugins right at our desks and different microphone systems that are, you know, a part of it all. I think we should start looking at that, painting in here. I would even consider moving the, some of these boards out where, maybe in the hallway where people can enjoy or people can read them versus in here. I don't think people really see these, like, I-
Do we know of anybody who, um, I don't want to say the word cheap, but in- inexpensively help us kind of figure out and design and pick color and all that carpet and stuff?
That might be, so maybe you can look into some of that. I just want to see what people's thoughts were on it and- and I think as we upgrade, I think this is one room we- we really should upgrade also.
I know you g- I- I do-
Well, we have that security too, so should we do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Security should be one of those.
I actually, um, yeah, and I, yep, I've been working with a company on the security and then I think we're also looking at the, like, the doors, like new, like, keep up door, um, getting in with a scan card. And then also, um, I know, I think there was a hole that was just cleaned by Rick for the glass as well.
Even the doors, I mean, it's better to have a window in the door so we can see out, you know, or some of those, not that we have our doors shut, but, you know.
I, with the, with some of that security stuff, I think I'd rather take some directions from Eric.
Yes, yeah.
Um, if he was on the, uh-
Agreed, I agree.
You know, and do-
I wanted to get it out, have you start getting it. One, our microphones, if you listen to them, there's a list on all of them and-
Horrible. I, my only, my only issue is, you know, I don't want, I don't want to get too spendy because, right, you know, and I know the cost of desks with their little-
Security is a little spendy.
Yeah, and I don't mind paying for security because I think that's something completely different. But when we're talking about new chairs, carpets, desks, all that stuff, I'm in the mentality, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Um, I do understand we've involved agents. Yeah, but I'm not seeing like the floor underneath, so I'm like, okay, this is still pretty good.
Right, there you do.
Shut the door.
Partly why I was looking at some of this is just to remain professional and have some of those upgrades that we should be having. And like I said, as you look around at others, I mean-
I agree, but on the other hand, we're a small town, we're not Minneapolis, Minnetonka and those people, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to spend money on aesthetics. I think we should spend the money, you know, on, definitely on the safety and security and maybe getting something nice in the background and definitely better microphones so the public can hear us. Desks and chairs, you know, I'd have to see prices and carpets, I'd have to see prices and all that kind of stuff.
It might not be carpet, it might just be something that can be cleaned.
And we can-
Exactly.
And we'll get those. And I do think we keep, um, other meetings out of this, there are other council chambers, some of that, I don't think there's any for some of that to be in here. Some like maybe at our projects and stuff, probably shouldn't be in here.
Right.
Or no beverages, you know, beverages are allowed, it's one of the rules, you know.
Okay. I just want to bring it up, not a huge deal, but I'll start thinking about some of that also.
Can I bring up one thing? Can I add one thing to our-
Sure, yep.
-agenda? I'm sorry. Um, I know I had some concerns, um, throughout this whole year regarding the, um, services of our lawyers. And I'm wondering if we can possibly look into maybe diff- finding different lawyers to, uh-
Because we reappoint in January.
That would be the time.
I am concerned with the- the billing and, um, the cost of our current law firm. And just wondering if we can look into maybe getting a different law firm, maybe contacting the legal Minnesota cities and maybe get a list from them who have experience with that, or maybe you know people, I don't know.
What you can do is you can actually put on an RFP and you can have, you can have them, you know, put in information to you, kind of like what their costs are, just information about them in general. And then you can kind of have interviews and-
Absolutely. Now's the time to start doing that, let's get ahead of this before we get into next year's concerns. That's for a time, yeah, it's gonna get cheaper out there. Absolutely, there will be and, well, I know the city, I mean, we'll have to weigh those things, but I think it's, I have no problem doing that. We'll be cautious and, and, you know, um, our city attorney has been with us for a long time, Dave Hubert, and so we'll have to, you know, respect that relationship, but-
I agree.
There's no problem, there's no problem looking at others, um-
And I didn't want to, and you know, obviously with some of the issues that we had going on this year, I certainly was not comfortable switching law firms in the middle of all of that.
Right. Agreed.
So, that's why I waited till now to bring it up.
Maggie, I think, I- I'm not sure, speaking of this, I'm not sure that you have, uh, Hubert's law firm on your mail list.
Yeah, I know that, because he doesn't have-
His secretary.
It's his secretary, yeah.
And I cannot think of her name. Do you know, is it Jessica?
Julienne.
Something with a J.
Julienne.
I feel like it's started with a J. Is it Julie?
Julienne, Julie or Julienne.
Yeah, check that in.
Yeah, I think that's what threw me off, because I was trying to find it. I- I sent it to him today, but it threw me off, so I was trying to type it in and it wasn't, okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I emailed-
Marshall's back? Julie Marshall's back?
Yeah. I think I emailed you about that.
You did, you did, yeah.
All right, no, that's good list. We can start, have Maggie, um, start contacting them, start getting an RFP together on that. Okay, no, that's good. And we'll move that to, uh, item number five, um, for this agenda, then adjourn, this is number six, but added one addition to the agenda. Anything else?
What kind of safe survey was the public works law?
Some of that should be on one of those items.
No, they're on a lot of surveys, or open business, property boundaries, or relocating.
So, you have safe land for relocating, so you want-
If we move the shed.
Yeah, that was the, the time to ask that question, invite you back. I just felt the time to ask that question would invite you back. I'm gonna get to my note before you move on to the next slide. I want to go back.
All right. We'll adjourn.
It's a work session and speak to questions.
We'll adjourn.
I got about five more.